Old type person, so I don't mind it at all.
Good morning.
Morning.
Everybody. One open.
Sure. You can soak them.
That's spirit.
And all one.
You recording Pam?
Yes. First up is we have minutes from the regular meeting of June second.
Should be short. Steve Sharn. I'll make a motion to the school.
Second, yes.
Aye.
Yes.
So we are doing the final certificate revenue for all the school districts. The exception of Princeton because they're having their meeting today. So Berkshire, we have a new general fund total of twenty five million eight hundred one thousand one twenty four ninety six cents. Special revenue, four million seven hundred eighty five thousand sixty one dollars nine cents. Debt service, one million five hundred and eighty nine thousand eighty six dollars eight cents. Capital projects, two million five hundred forty eight thousand one hundred sixty dollars sixty seven cents. Enterprise, one million twenty four thousand nine twenty two seventy seven cents. Internal services, six hundred ninety two thousand three hundred and two dollars. Fiduciary, one hundred ninety two thousand eight dollars and thirty five cents. Total certificate is thirty six million six hundred thirty two thousand six sixty five ninety two cents. Net change over prior certificate is five hundred sixty two thousand one forty seven and twenty seven cents. And appropriations to notice.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So move.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
They have Cardinal local schools, their amendment five, their new general fund total is twenty million seven hundred four thousand eight fifty seven forty three cents. Special revenue, two million three hundred fifty one thousand one hundred ninety five dollars forty five cents. Debt service, two million twenty three thousand four sixty four fifty cents. Enterprise, one million two hundred and sixty two thousand five forty four fifty nine oh six. Internal services, six hundred seventy five thousand ninety five two cents. Oh, that was capital, I'm sorry. Um, internal services is sixty one thousand three hundred thirty eight thousand five cents. Trust agency funds, fifty four thousand nine hundred ninety four dollars and forty six cents. Total certificate, twenty seven million one hundred thirty four thousand two ninety three ninety seven cents. Net change over prior certificate is negative one million nine hundred thirty four thousand nine ninety six and thirty one cents. And appropriations to notice.
It's not. This only go.
They did.
Their negative. Did they certify what they?
This isn't appropriations, it's just the revenue adjustment from the prior certificate.
Do you know if they got their money yet from that bill?
I think they didn't, that there's a negative in their capital fund and their bond retirement.
Yeah, they got so big.
And they got, did they have a new treasury yet?
Not that, I think they have a named one, but I don't think Terry's left yet.
Yeah.
Oh, he's not left yet?
No. He's on this.
So, yes. Ayes.
James, yeah.
Yeah.
Where's he going?
Oh, sort of off the side.
Yeah.
Where's Paul?
Liberty Township.
Chartered Local Schools, this is their amendment number six. New general fund total is sixty two million six hundred sixty five thousand six eighty five sixty one cents. Special revenue, six million eight hundred and sixty three thousand two thirty three fifty two cents. Debt service, four hundred forty six thousand six hundred sixty eight dollars sixty eight cents. Capital projects is four million three hundred eighty two thousand three ninety seven seventy six cents. Internal services, nine million nine hundred fifteen thousand four thirteen thirty cents. Fiduciary funds, one hundred twenty one thousand seven oh three seventy three cents. Total certificate is eighty four million three ninety five one oh two sixty cents. Net change over prior is a hundred and thirty one thousand eight ninety nine and ninety seven cents.
Appropriations don't see.
And appropriations do not.
Seven. Second. Yes.
Yep.
West G Local School District, it's amendment number six for them. New general fund total is fifty nine million five hundred eighty four thousand six eighteen thirty six cents. Special revenue fund total is seven million five hundred seventy one thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and thirty nine cents. Capital projects, twenty five million two hundred thirty two thousand seven twenty two and four cents. Enterprise fund, one million six hundred thousand three hundred seventy nine dollars twelve cents. Internal services, three hundred and four thousand four seventy three eighty nine cents. Fiduciary fund, one thousand five hundred and fifty eight dollars. Total certificate, ninety four million two hundred and ninety five thousand four sixty two and eighty cents. Net change over prior is a negative seventy seven thousand nine ninety eight and seventeen cents. And appropriations to notice.
They say they're gonna spend twenty five million dollars.
So they have their cat.
They're right.
So well, the well. And you.
Oh, that's great.
They transferred, so I mean, that's what we told them.
The well is developed several. And they put in a sewer plant, if I remember right.
And they had to do water and soil.
This is, they're like a small country.
So they. How long do they have to spend that money?
Well.
So it's a lot.
No.
No. Well, I mean, not till we were due, well, we're due again next.
Have you.
End of next month.
They get to tell us that this is their, what they're going to do.
Well, they shifted, when they pulled their, their levy, they shifted a bunch of their cash to capital. They, they moved millions. And Karen said here. Two weeks ago?
Yes.
Two weeks ago. And that's, she said their plan is to, to remodel the existing structures. Alright, that's the plan. I mean, that's, this is like twice what Chartered did in here. I don't think Chartered, twenty five million.
No, but Chartered's actually done it.
Well, that's true, but I mean, but this is predictive, right?
Yes.
Well, they aren't working out the water in the sewer.
Say in February that the project's, the surface, so.
Well, because they made a horse change.
Right.
So move. Second, yes.
Yes.
Aye.
That, that was a twenty five million dollar course changes.
Should we, should we make a difference with moving that emergency by these up to the general fund for next year?
Yeah, so they, they did, there is a new requirement of state auditor that they have to account for their emergency lettings differently. So they're moving them into the general fund. Which.
Seems contrary to law, you know, that research we did was.
She funded it.
The AG opinions.
Well, I'm just saying that's what they're required to do. So they were asking, can they co-mingle or not? And I said, not. You could move it, but you've got to isolate it in that fund. Because.
I agree, it's not general fund.
It's not general fund. So.
It's interesting that the state told them to do that, that's.
Yeah, they said across, it's not just them. All, everybody with emergencies are being told. Maybe they were hedging the bet of what's coming to the legislature.
So we have Mountville Township and.
Real quick, hence done, so their meetings tonight, we don't have to certify that?
We have another meeting next Monday, we'll have to certify, they'll have to go five days without certified money.
Well, they, they can still work off of what they have. I think they still have a time limit, I don't think it's any different than when our, you know, when January first comes, they have up until a certain amount of time to get their first amendment over to us.
Yeah, but I thought they said they didn't have tempers, so they'll have to run off of existing monies until, they can't cut new monies until next.
Everybody's.
Well, that, but they're all.
They've already turned.
Oh, they turned.
Yeah.
Everybody else certified.
They. Just for next year.
No, it's not next year, it's, this is the final to button up, yeah.
If they, they don't have tempers, they go directly into new money. July first, they have new, it's.
Right.
They don't do like a township.
So it's already certified though.
The carryover will be, but not like, that's why I was asking about the sale of the building for Cardinal. Those events, if they're not in the bank on today, they don't get certified.
Correct, right, right, yes. Yeah, I.
Are they why we are meeting next month?
I'm assuming that was it.
We'll talk about that.
Okay, listen.
So amendment number four, so with.
Maybe it'll get warmer in here.
Yeah. With the establishment of all of these reserve funds and them incorporating them into their budget, they didn't really understand. So what we're doing is we're decreasing to reserve funds because the money was already there and certified from the budget hearing. And when she sent over the request to increase that, we did not know.
She tried to certify it twice?
Basically. So when she got it, we did have the conversation, we did explain.
Realized it's uncertified.
Correct. So we're doing a net adjustment to their reserve funds, look at eighty five thousand. New capital project fund total is one million six hundred sixty thousand. Total certificate, three million five hundred ninety three thirty six dollars and thirty six cents. And appropriations to notice.
Aye. Second, yes.
Yes.
South Russell Village, it's amendment number three, they have an increase in their income special revenue of a hundred thousand. And then they have a net adjustment in their capital projects of a negative nine hundred forty seven thousand three sixty nine. New special revenue fund total.
What, what fund was that again?
Capital.
Capital. Well, they had three.
Building and land.
Building and land went up, road went up, and then was it Bell Road came down? Yes, Bell Road came down by a million two hundred sixty nine dollars and seventy.
It's a grant that they didn't get.
Oh, that's. Yeah.
Oh.
Um, special revenue fund total is seven million four hundred forty nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars sixty eight cents. New capital project is one million six hundred forty six thousand fifty eight dollars. Five cents. Total certificate, eleven million two hundred forty five thousand nine hundred eighty dollars twenty eight cents. And appropriations to notice.
So move. Second, yes.
Yes.
Russell Township amendment number five, they have a fund balance adjustment from a check that they had to avoid from twenty twenty four, which increased their beginning balance in their prior district fund. New special revenue fund total is nine million eight hundred nineteen thousand two forty one ninety four cents. Total certificate is fifteen million sixty two thousand fifty four dollars and five cents. And appropriations to notice.
So, yes.
Yes.
Aye.
You know, that check that did not. There was.
Have any fraudulent checks?
No, they, they, what I was told, they. The vendor didn't report it as being not received, so it was just lost. And then somebody.
Really lost.
And so, well, they didn't void it, somebody requested it be repaid, and then it got caught in this. You can't repay them a bill twice, so it had to be unwound. And because it reached, it went over a year, the auditor states that you have to reduce your certificate. Because their carryover got screwed up. And you know, it was, that was not a lot of money.
It's a patient vendor.
Yeah, that's what I said, a fire vendor. And it's not a lot of money, probably went whatever. Okay, let's.
Um, so we received several cash transfer requests from the health district. Um, there is one of eight that after we went through and reviewed and still waiting on information from the state auditor's office that we're able to do. That's going to be from the general fund to the injury prevention fund, and it's to, um, take away money from the grant fund. Because there was an employee that is no longer there, therefore they couldn't pay for an expense.
That's just been the current year, correct?
Yes.
So that is valid cash.
And it's for four hundred and thirty dollars.
We just need to make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Second, yes.
Yes.
Awesome.
The other pending ones, we're waiting for our, we'd, I panicked here. I had Pam send a email because the other cash transfers involve monies from a prior year. The auditor state initially said, we don't want to use cash transfers, we want to do cash fund balance adjustments. So we said, well, but except these are the then and nows, so that's a different caveat. You still want us to do that? Because to be clean with the then and nows, it probably shouldn't be a cash transfer. But because it's prior year, it should be a, a journal entry change. So they're debating that, and we have not heard back, correct? That was last week, we have not heard back from them, so.
And I have others too, I think one of them that was sent over had a significant number of pages, it's documentation, it was like, it's, it's called the food cost method all again.
It's like this one.
Yeah, it's the whole state. Uh, I, I'm working with Mr. Casura to clean, line that for you guys, it was more of a rounded number, they gave instead the actual total for it. Uh, and so those, I guess, those are the food costs is every year in December, we have to submit to the state a accounting for everything we spend in our food program. We can then charge that amount the next year, so you're like, you're always a year or two behind on what you charge. So when we look at moving the money from one, from the food fund to the general fund to pay the expense, that that we use, but they sent you like the entire thing, and there's really one or two pages I can do it.
And I think nowhere on the cover sheet was there a year.
Uh, it's just no, there's no year. And I'd have to check, it may not, it may not print with how they have it set up, it's.
We have those handwritten.
Okay, yeah, because we can't, the spreadsheet is, you can only enter information, only print whatever they have it selected.
Yeah.
Just lock, password lock, but I'll go check that.
The actual cash transfer request is all.
Oh, sorry, that, yeah, sorry.
They didn't indicate what year this money was coming from, so we, we need to test it to.
Yeah.
oldest obligation, not knowing what year, we don't know which one to test it against.
Yeah, and some of this will go into the budget laws, something Mr. Casura talked about, this should hopefully correct some of these issues that are coming up.
Okay, so we're not going to deal with the other ones, right? Okay, what else you do?
Um, other than, um, members of the health district has to be put out of the job.
Let me go back to the cat transfers, are they, are those transfers, they're ones reflected in this sketching? Because no, okay.
Those are.
Correct.
Just so you're aware, there, there was a whole series of, um, then and now purchase orders from twenty twenty four that were being paid this year. Because the testing for then and nows had to have money then, and it has to have money now, and the fund they were paying out of. We discovered that the then failed. So the other available remedy is to find another fund that has then money in it. And it turned out that the general fund was the only other fund that they could likely spend out of that had then money in it. So that means they really did, they really paid specialty services out of the general fund, which is permitted. But then they want to backfill the general fund's money from that special service fund this year, when they do have money, to repopulate the general fund balance. That's all, that's all being moved. So it, it, it really doesn't change their bottom line, it just is a movement between funds, but it will make a fund go down another fund. That close?
Yeah, yeah, it's just we're reimbursing the left pocket for what the right pocket spent.
Put your pen. As we previously. Talked about, we do care for about fixing. General fund. Specific. That's what's going to happen, and disturb to repay these, it's like a loan. Yep, you loan yourself a general fund, now you're going to take special.
Yeah, so one of the points for the next area as well, but I've asked the person who creates our bill, they're going to bring it down by fund. So each fund will be charged, so it was requested, budget commission had last time, so the invoices going forward will actually charge the fund that was incurred in. Yeah, so the general fund, and then there will be a re, you know, there won't be an reimbursement after the fact, uh, moving forward. So, and, and the, the food was just an easy one, that's why I mentioned that one, because it's a, a state cost methodology, they approve it. So it's an easy thing to say, hey, the state is certified, do you spend, it was like a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So that's an easier one to say, it's not just my reflection, it's the actual state saying that's what you spent last year. So, but we'll correct that moving forward. Okay, uh, so I wanted to bring up just a couple of things, uh, and first off, I apologize for us not being at the last budget commission meeting, I was, I was, uh, there's miscommunication on that. So, um, a couple of things, by no means are these excuses, they're more of, um. Just going through the process with all of you. What we've noticed in general with the things that Mr. Walters spoke about, which is the twenty twenty four issue with the dollars that are announced, it mostly goes back to a single employee who is. Who is longer with GPH, they're about to be done with GPH, and some issues that were granted with that person. Uh, and that's, it escalated kind of beyond what our initial expectation was going to be with that issue. Um, what we are going to do, I've worked with Mr. Casura on this, is, uh, some proactive purchase order management to avoid the then and now process, because those have been, uh. More than expected, uh, and more than necessary. Uh, early submission of documents to get those to the auditor's office, uh, quicker than not, be so much the last minute on Wednesday, when the last minute due. Uh, we're going to restructure the finance team a little bit, uh, to better build a work relationship with the auditor's office backup, uh, with how it was prior. And some new policies and procedures regarding timelines and signatures, those things, so that's a little bit quicker as well. And then obviously working with Mr. Casura throughout to make sure these things are done the proper way. To address some things, Mr. Hitchcock had a question on last, uh, the last time we were, we were together. Um, one thing I've, we have started asking the board and gone through some of the processes, but one of the questions that is going to be at the board at the next meeting. Assuming that, um, you know, I think we meet in the middle somewhere here today, is that. Um, although our services aren't easy to forecast in terms of what emergencies could come up and what we have to do with response rates. What I am looking to do is create the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, a Geogga Public Health version of that, and what that does is allows people, based on their income and deed, to request a, air was a loan or funding from the health department. Who take the internal dollars we have right now, that went over last time, that the funds have higher than normal balances, request approval, um, to have those transferred appropriately. Uh, and what I would like to do is the board started this Water Pollution Control Loan Fund at ten thousand dollars, that was what we had at the time, that were the late fees that have incurred. We're looking, uh, if the board will entertain my, um, explanation of it and my request to move about five hundred thousand dollars from the other funds, uh, that is not currently being used into that Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. And then the public can then request assistance through, uh, through the health department, through the process we're in Mr. Casura about to do that. Uh, the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, the reason I call it that is it's a state version of that that we have now. And so we're going to mimic that state version that's already been approved, so that we're not creating a, a whole new animal in of itself. Um, we expect, um, with it going, undergoing the overview right now with an expectation completion date of August fifteenth, to have that to the board for the regularly scheduled meeting to vote on. And put that water pollution control at the, to get the monies, uh, put in that place that appropriate at that time. Uh, fee reductions, uh, I'm sure Mr. Scott would like to hear this one, uh, but the pool fund, uh, what we're going to do is do a zero permit fee for, um, the upcoming year. And then the only thing that will have to be paid though is the state required fee portion, because we can't wait the state's fee, we don't have the authority to do that. We've also, uh, as I mentioned last time, I had to wait until the board actually voted on it, but we already were in the process, we're lowering fees about sixty nine thousand dollars for twenty twenty six. Uh, and that includes the food, the pools, and, um, some other miscellaneous fees with environmental health. Our grant reductions, I mentioned last time. Just to put kind of put some, some numbers and faces to those, the Public Health Emergency Repairness Grant, we were notified with, um, almost no notice, that it'll be reduced by twenty five thousand dollars, about twenty eight percent reduction with the grant is currently. Um, and what they're saying right now is they're going to fund the first nine months of the grants, and the last three months may be unfunded. Uh, the question that we obviously have come up with is, is work still expected to be done with no funding? Uh, and we're still waiting on some response time from that. Uh, the Ohio Department of Health, uh, producer provided the health part fifty thousand dollars, uh, for accreditation, it would say mandated cost. That contribution, uh, helped offset our accreditation fee, which is a yearly fee, as well as our accreditation coordinator position. Uh, they are not going to do that moving forward, so that, that expense we felt or burdened by the health part moving forward. Uh, and then a workforce development grant, which provides, um, roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, for staffing, it's set to include in twenty twenty seven, well, it's spent down before twenty twenty seven. They're not expecting as of currently to have that renewed. So that'd be another hundred thousand dollars reduction in revenue we would expect to get, um, moving forward. Nursing, uh, side of things, we currently pay, because I know I mentioned this last time, the question was, you know, what are those costs? We currently pay right around thirty dollars an hour, uh, after the twenty twenty five increases for our, our registered nurse. Uh, our biggest competitor obviously is UH, um, but if you take into other hospitals as well, they're on average paying about forty one dollars an hour, if you just, I just went through indeed and kind of pulled up the nurses in the area. Well, I would like to increase that, the biggest problem we have is obviously the revenue side of things, the state has cut the one grants, uh, sorry, they haven't cut it, but it made to point that Geogga wouldn't benefit from it, they get vaccinated Ohio grants, and we no longer have that revenue coming in. Uh, tuberculosis cases, we've seen an increase in those, um, and what we're seeing sometimes is that the hospital is unable to take them. Uh, that expense spared by the health part could be fifteen and twenty five thousand a year. Uh, roughly, depends on how many cases we have, I mean, before, a couple of years ago, if we had one case a year, that was a lot, so now we can have three or four at a time. And then the plan to purchase vehicles, we're still working through, uh, Mr. Casura, that's everything that you guys need lined up for that as well. Um, and then I would like to, we have an emergency response fund, which is kind of mentioned, that our, our budget is oftentimes somewhat unknown in terms of what emergencies that arrived, uh, be derived. Um, looking at transferring dollars into there as well, so that we have that ability to respond through there, and it's not just each fund having its own balance, it would be the emergency response fund.
Which fund is that?
Uh, that is fund. I don't have the number for me. Shoot, I'm sorry, I didn't put fund numbers on here. Right now, there's twenty six thousand dollars in it. If I ever look correctly.
Do you have this?
I don't have that.
I'll.
Yeah, sorry. So part of it would be to move it into, uh. If, I guess the, the question partially for yourself as well would be if we, uh, if we reuse a fund, I have a fund that we can reuse, if you want to rename it as emergency response fund, which I'd like to do, would that be?
Well, I don't know, trying to find where that balance.
Yeah, so current.
I think so, yeah.
Uh, six, yes. I think it's. Thank you, Paul, sorry, it's not on here.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not on here, but it has a balance? Why is it in here?
Some.
I think there was no activity planned, it is probably why.
It's not should be on, because there's, sixty twenty five has no activity, no revenue, no expenses, it's on here. I just, I think all funds should be reported.
I just had the sheet, I, the one of the sheets I had had that on ours, emergency response, I just didn't write the number down, I apologize.
You think it's sixty thirty up? So it's got nineteen thousand six.
It's projected for twenty six. It's not the, this is.
Well, we don't know if there's any balance, there's no activity, so that would be the same as the.
I think it was to be, I, I think we front loaded a lot of money in there a while back.
Has to have something.
Yeah.
Why didn't you change the name of that, uh, it's sorry, it's the same purpose.
So, uh, I was going back through and trying to find the exact purpose of it, and the purpose, um, that I found was specifically isolated to, um. I was, so that, what I heard, what I, my understanding was from what I saw, was that it was only for, uh, the purpose of, I think it actually said, uh, public health emergencies, it didn't define like what, or if it was personnel or twenty seven pay, or anything of that nature. And so it's.
It's not reserve fund.
No, it was, it was.
Can't use it for twenty seven pay.
Yeah, so it was relatively bland, and so that'd be the question of, do we, you know, if we have this.
Unless you get a twenty seven pay person.
Right. Yeah, and, and I, and the question I had part is, if it's a public health emergency, usually you declare those, oftentimes we don't declare a public, the state would declare that, not us. So that question would come out of that as well.
Let's hit this, let's, going forward, let's make sure all funds are, are reported.
Uh, so. But my, my, the main thing I'm looking at is we would reduce a number of these funds' current balances, put it into, uh, what that fund we're looking to create, which is the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. That could then be used to funnel that money back to the public for those in need, uh, for septic systems. There was a question internally about, uh, we did it for Wells also, um, but current, but those regions only knew, it's not very often, we had like a, Parker was the exception. Um, but doing it for septic system, so if someone's septic system is going bad, maybe, I mean, the worst case scenario, they're eighty five years old, they have. I mean, the worst case scenario, they're eighty five years old, they have no income and their septic goes bad, and they don't have the, they don't have the means to be able to repair it. Uh the other, the other thing that we did look at was uh operation maintenance uh that program. Is if we have people that are consistently doing the right thing and they're testing, well, can we. And sorry, their test, their systems come back appropriately and be monitored, can we reduce their their fee at all as well? That's more subjective because obviously when you start talking. Uh not everyone's charged in the same year, they're charged over a time period. Uh the only ones that are charged yearly are the um. Uh NPDS systems, that it, there's more to that than what I have right now. That would take a lot more. Uh conscious thought of how we do that, what's the number, when it draws down to zero, what do we do? What if they only cover half of the year for some people? Um so that would draw down the majority of the balances, though significantly on most of these funds. Um and then the emergency response fund, if we put dollars in there, I think that would be a way that, I think the health department, the board could feel like we have the ability to respond to emergencies that occurs. While at the same time being mindful of the balances that are left in some of the funds such as, I know Mr. Sherry always bring up the swimming pool fund. Um or other funds as well. And part of the policies and procedures too that we're looking at will be the transfer of these dollars um at the end of the year or will be slightly before than the year. We'll make sure they're transferred in the year that they're actually incurred, um if if a transfer is necessary, depends on like what the project is obviously.
So let's talk about a couple of things you said.
Yes.
You said. A single employee was the result, was the. Not to be used as an excuse, was the. On root cause of why all of the then and now requirement, you've got almost a mil- over a million dollars of that in.
Yeah.
For twenty twenty four, which tells me. They're using then and nows like everyone else uses purchase orders. Which is not right, I mean, we all know then and nows are remedies, they're not practice, correct? But here's the irony, here's what I, I guess I can't wrap my head around. You're doing the same thing in twenty twenty five. That employee's gone. Your current, your current POs against your cross jurisdictional agreement. Is also using that. So how can it be linked to an employee that's no longer there?
Yeah, so the ones from twenty twenty four, those are the ones we tried to uh to correct to then now is the ones that you're mentioning, yes, so that the. Uh new pro- jurisdictional, pro- jurisdictional agreement was not put in place uh to. Uh we went through legal on how to properly vet that, how to properly get it approved. It was after the fact, and so we were unable to bill those at the time because the the contract didn't line up with who was being billed. And so then in. I think it was March or April is when we had that all signed, got to your office, got approved, and then we started billing against that.
Isn't that the same issue you had in twenty four? I mean, you mean you had a con- a good cross jurisdictional in twenty four, but you didn't have one for twenty five?
Uh we had to, we had to redo the salaries on there because they were not, uh so what I was doing at the time was I'd go to the board and say we need to look at somebody hiring a position that's fifty thousand dollar a year, they would say yes. We did not go through, actually amend the contract, um which through discussions with your team at legal, that's, that's what we should have done was say, hey.
Yeah, here, so here, here's why it's important, and this is different than maybe if this were happening. In a Jaga County organization. The, the relationship between Jaga County and Jaga Public Health is is very unique. There, there is not a single entity that operates that way, where the. And I'm not saying this because to be demeaning of anybody.
I understand.
Lake County is a vendor of sorts to Jaga County, right? You're under an agreement to perform a certain service for a certain amount of money. And that's defined in a, in an agreement. But you're also the ones generating purchase orders. Which are being spent against that agreement. So you're on both sides of the equation. Normally, people call that conflict of interest. I, I have not found a single entity in Jaga that has that flexibility of being. The vendor, but also can write the very purchase order that grants the vendor something to do. I mean, I, I, that's a huge issue for me. Therefore, somebody else needs to vet this, somebody between us being the auditor. And you being the vendor. And I think that has to be the board, they're the only other Jaga representatives. I cannot vet. A purchase order while I'm then to test the encumbrance.
Yeah.
Cause I'm, cause I, now I'm in conflict, I, I'm, I'm testing my own purchase order. Expense, expense against it.
Well, which board's approving like the bills list?
Jaga Public Health.
Right, but it's all, it are.
So.
But it's, it's ratified, right?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're going.
After the boat, after the ship sail. And while that's good, if it's, if there's other checks in balances, while that's permitted, ADP is a good example. There are other checks and balances along the way. There's a fiscal person, for example, that does the ADP billing and they're a Jaga County employee. They're not a vendor per se. So this is so unique and it's so um. I, I just think we have to do this better than average, and right now, we're not doing it better than average, we're not even doing it average. And so I have an issue with being able, for a vendor being able to write the very purchase order in which they perform the service. I think there should be an intermediary in there, whether it's a representative of the board or a representative of Jaga. Because they have to test that relationship constantly. And then it comes to the auditor to test the whole thing. But I, but I can't, I can't be writing them while I'm testing them because otherwise I have to create a Chinese wall and I need twice as many employees and then that's not gonna work. So that I think is a huge hurdle, and I think the other thing that we all maybe missed when we had your budget originally presented to us is. You know, I think it's on the, on its surface, it looked like you had a lot of money. But the reality was when we, if you, and and I, I think it would have been good for us to have known this when we were first looking at your budget. The reality is, the reason why you appear to have a lot of money, that I'm arguing now that you didn't have a lot of money. Is because you had a lot of obligations, you had not yet done your encumbrances. A whole year, for example. How much was that total? Almost a mil- a million two?
A million five.
You had a million five of obligations that never hit the books on your submission. Because you accrued the revenue, you accrued the grants that you received, so your revenue got boosted. But your expenses weren't aligned because you had no expenses reported because you hadn't obligated anything. That, I think, sent us on a quasi wild goose chase, looking at, I've got tons of money, this is not good. Yeah, it looked that way, but, but that's only on paper, not knowing that. These, all these twenty twenty four expenses had to book shit. I think that, if you're gonna be skewed by time, that's gotta be somehow reported, and the best way of reporting that is. Opening the encumbrance and having a carryover. That's the best way of doing it. Then and nows still deny you that ability to report it. That's why I'm so against then and nows specifically, in your case, for millions of dollars, it's just. It, it's, we're looking in the rearview mirror, we're gonna go from thinking we're flush with money to all of a sudden thinking, what happened, we're broke now. Cause we're gonna catch up in twenty twenty five and and we're, we're gonna look like, what are we doing here? We're, we're doing, we're doing a sawhorse approach to monitoring this, does that make sense?
Yeah, and and I, and I didn't do a very good job articu- I was trying to articulate that and I didn't do a very good job articulating that, because we were in the process of trying to get those.
But you, but you shouldn't have to articulate it if it's memorialized in a carryover. That's just a number and your bottom line will come. Chris would not have had an issue with your balances, because your bottom line would have come down, because your encumbrances would have included.
I, I, I still think uh, yes, I, there are ones like, I'm using swimming pools as, not, not a brag, but as a true example.
You can have a swimming pool.
I, I think there are some that I would prefer to use that money to put it into. Um and and my request would be if it, if the board was so amicable to it. Importantly, looking at the budget quarterly and then saying, do we have dollars there, so like, did O and M bring in more money than expected, was swimming pools more expected? To move those dollars to the WPLF, because I do think unless the state changes this operation maintenance program, which. I don't know if they will or not, but if they, if they didn't, we're running into a number of people, mostly in their upper years, mostly on fixed incomes. Who are having a very hard time, uh especially if. As an example, in Jaga, we had a forty one percent failure rate when we did a, we did an analysis of twenty years worth of for sale property back when that was the program. There's about a forty one percent failure rate. If we start diving into these, we see failure rates that I don't think will be forty one percent, but if they're even thirty percent. We're gonna have people who are in their eighties who are gonna say, I can't afford twenty five thousand dollars for new system or twenty thousand or eighteen thousand, or thirteen thousand two. And I think that is where, if we have the ability to help them, we should. Uh now hopefully the state money keeps coming, which is the W, it's, it's actually called WPLF, water control fund. But if that stops, that's an additional fifty to a hundred thousand dollar year that we no longer have to help them out, that we have been helping them out with for years. So I do have concerns that I would like to move money. As we, as we complete the issues that there were, that you mentioned, which I almost agree with. As we correct those issues, I would like to put money into there, as we talked about, in larger numbers if possible. Because I do think we're gonna hit a wall really soon, relatively soon, we're gonna have members of the public who either. Their options are gonna be either they have a non-compliance system, which they get. They get a fine for, or they need help. Um because selling your house is not an option, I mean, that's not. I'm not, we're not pushing that.
Does the fund exist right now?
Uh no, it went to the board for creations, so we're sending it in um to the auditor's office for submission. And that would be, I think we actually called it WPLF or uh G- GPH WPLF. And that would be to funnel that money into there, um when I say funnel, to put the money into there, to then go ahead and do it. We started out relatively low, where's that money gonna come from? Uh that will come from funds, um it's a sale property fund, six, zero. Forty, sorry, I apologize.
Sixty thirty seven.
Sixty thirty seven, sorry, and that one was the one that um has had, that's had a balance since before I, I've been here, uh. Want to say a balance, more than, more than what it costs to run the program for a long time. So. I would like to do that, there's some other funds like swimming pools, I like to lose some dollars out there, because we're not gonna, we, you're right, it's, it's smaller numbers, we're not gonna spend it.
Um it's very interesting. Looking at this. Presentation. There's nine tran- ten transfers. One point three million dollars in general funds. The others are all transfers out. Are these balances that we are being given that after those transfer out?
No, they would be before.
That's why I'm saying your nu- our numbers are all skewed.
Those, those, those transfers, wh- what originally we thought we were gonna do is if the general fund paid the, the bill to Lake County. The other funds reimburse it, whether it's a chart, we call it, I've called it chargeback, here it was an expense reallocation. That's how that money was being moved back, but it sounds like that may not be the most opportune way to do it, instead, the request, I think, and I forget who, who requested it.
They, they should have obligated, they should have encumbered the money in the respective funds at the time they made the obligation, that's what should have happened.
So I think before. You're not asking us to create this water pollution control fund. We're asking the board to create.
They did approve it, it would be going to the auditor's office, actually put it in place, the board did create the fund.
Well, it depends on the fund, depends on what the fund is, some they do have to approve, some they, they don't. So will, depends, I, I could see the papers.
Okay, I'm, I'm a senior. Uh I make over the forty two thousand dollar income limit. I'm selling my home in an arm's length transaction. I failed, I'm allowed to test it two, three times.
Uh there's, there's not much of a limit, like we'll keep testing.
I failed.
Yeah, you failed.
Yes, so I have a choice of a new leach field, which is twenty five or thirty thousand dollars. Or I can put a. Aeration, aeration system. Cause I don't have sewers available.
Yep.
And that aeration's gonna cost a lot. You're going to, this fund is going to loan me money. As an individual over uh.
So it, it's, even though it's called a loan fund, it is money that is given to the homeowners, there's no expected repayment for it. Um and so what it is, is you, there's uh income thresholds for it. And you may get twenty five percent funded, you may get fifty, you may get a hundred percent, depending where your, where your uh income level is. That's, that's the state version of it, we're looking to mimic that, similarly, we may increase the threshold for uh. The income threshold, uh which we're going through with, with legal now and how to do all those things. But it's not, even though it is called a loan, it is not a loan, it's actually given to the person, there's no expected repayment.
And it's also, it's not triggered, the, the reason they're trying to do this grant program, it's not triggered by the sale of property. The nice thing about for sale property was oftentimes there would be money available to address the problem.
You asked for.
Houses transferred.
Just ask for it, yeah.
Now you've got, you know, an eighty five year old couple on a fixed income and. They're showing up at their door saying your system's fa- has failed, you have to replace it, because the state is telling us that we have to test these on, on, on a basis. And.
Yes, it all just started this year.
Uh, supposed, it was supposed to start in twenty fifteen, uh we were.
When did it start?
Oh, we just started this last year.
Okay.
So, so that's the problem, yeah, and and it's, and there's, and just to make sure that it's on the same page. Leash fields as an example, the older style systems, more traditional style systems, all you have to do is show us you got the system pumped. Once every fiveish years and you're fine, as long as the installer, or sorry, the uh service provider doesn't say, hey, it's not working, there's stuff bubbling up. Or we don't get a complaint from your neighbor saying I can smell poop, we went out there and tested. Those are generally, uh they're about a hundred dollars for five years, roughly, so it's twenty bucks a year. The other systems, aeration, NPDS, things like that. Those, if it's, if it's a true NPDS, which you have a contract with the Ohio EPA on, it has to be tested every single year. And you have to have two services, two service agreement, or sorry, you have to have service done twice a year as well in your contract. Those ones, which cost more as well, and they have more parts, people are saying, oh, I'm not gonna say who, but they'll come to us and say, hey. I just got this system, three years later, I gotta replace a UV light, that's eight hundred bucks, I gotta replace this, I gotta do this. I only make, I only make a thousand dollars a month, how am I gonna do this? And that's what we're looking at, saying, how can we help? Because those systems, unfortunately, sometimes are, they're not, we don't push them, they're, they're last ditch effort. If you, if you can't do anything else, we do that system. But they're expensive and they're expensive to maintain. If you're eighty five years old, I'm just gonna have a random number of eighty five and you have limited income. Between the fee that we have to charge for the permit. And on top of that, your, your contract, which I have an NPDS system, I think my contract is. Three hundred and fifty something a year, uh what it costs to five hundred.
There's no lien.
No, no.
Goes on to the tax duplicate. It's a. Likely a transfer of money.
Correct.
Who's gonna write that check?
GPH would, which is what we do now, uh so usually it doesn't, it goes only, it doesn't go to the person, it goes to the person doing the, the, the work. Yeah, sorry, the county, sorry, the county. Uh so if yours failed and uh Mr. Waller has a service pro- service company. And you contract him to install it, we write the check to him after the work is done on your house. So you don't get the check and then let's say you run away and don't do anything, that's not best.
It was gonna cost thirty thousand dollars, I don't meet the minimum income. For real estate. Production. But I get.
From.
I get twenty thousand dollars. Cause I don't make much money. A twenty thousand dollar gift. Is taxable. Do I have to report that as income?
I do not know if the. Though the, the money never hits the homeowner in the, in the, the state's WPLF, I don't know if they have to claim it or not, honestly.
I'd have a homeowner get a benefit?
You bet, yeah, I'd have to read through with the state, they may have to claim it, I, I don't, I don't know that side of it, I'd have to, I'd have to look through and.
Like, yeah, it's kinda like COVID.
Yeah, I'd have to ask the state.
The challenge here is, where's this moving money from pocket to pocket? We're taxing people to eleven to fund the health department, who is then helping people who can't afford. Their home, part of their home. I mean, we're just, a- and then the people that we're taxing are claiming they're losing their home, i- it's just a vicious circle, i- it's, we're, we're not making money here. We're moving money.
Well, in long term, so I don't know how long this would last, it depends on the system, depends on how many people.
Once they has money.
Well, right, but I don't, I don't know if that, I mean, the, the fifty to a hundred thousand dollars we need a year now, we can be done with that in three months. I mean, there's that many people requesting it that.
You've been doing this in the past?
Oh, yeah, well, it's, because the state, there's a state version, and the state version has been in place longer than I've been around.
Um so does the state send you grant money?
Correct.
So there's a funded mandate, not, not.
Well, sorry, so, yes and no, so there's the one the state does, I'm looking to augment that and create a, a.
Right now.
Yeah.
Do you write any checks to help people who cannot pass?
If they meet the thresholds for the Ohio EPA, yes. You write, it doesn't go to them, it goes to, well, the county does, but it goes to the service installer.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
I don't write them to people, no, I.
Right, it goes, it goes to install.
Vendor.
The, yeah, the vendor, yes.
But if there's, uh if that, with grant money only?
Yes.
Grant money only. You're currently not taking any money out of the taxpayer to grant.
No.
Your proposal. Now, before the auditor's office, is to merely set up the process because the board is already.
They've ruled the fund, yes, and and the, the program in general, they were supportive, helped the program.
How much did they approve?
Uh we did, we only had a ten thousand dollar request the first time when, plus, because so what we did is we set this up. Any, uh any, so if the program operation maintenance, if that program costs a hundred thousand dollars a year to operate and we bring in a hundred and ten, which is what we did. Um we said that ten thousand dollar difference that we didn't expect, it was like unexpected revenue. That goes into that program, but it was mostly late fees, it was, because we don't, we don't bank on late fees. So that money could be ten thousand this year, it could be zero next year, it could be a hundred thousand next year. Um what I'm looking at though is the additional revenue we have in some funds that may not add up to a lot.
Has a schedule prepared yet?
Uh yeah, Mr. Kassir and I were going over that uh over the weekend, is what we were looking at for fun.
And your board has to approve that first.
Correct, yes.
So what's your wild ass guess on what that's gonna be?
Um. The, the hope would be we're somewhere, we're somewhere between. At least two hundred thousand dollars in the first year, we would, we would put into that fund. At least two hundred thousand dollars in the first year, we would, we would put into that fund.
That'll go in a heartbeat.
It will, I mean, the.
So once the, once the word gets out. You're in a cashless position to be able to help. Seniors. Uh, with their. Passing this now mandated annual test.
Uh, it depends on each system, it all depends.
That money is gonna go in a heartbeat.
And, and it very well could it, I mean, as I think. You all adequately mentioned the one time it's, it better goes back to public that sits in a, sits in a coffer for us and there are people who. Can't get enough help to stay in the county if their subject is functional. And then on top of that. Take all, take some of those people out. There are some systems that are just not going to pass in general. They may be too old to meet the current criteria. We haven't gotten all those yet, but when we start getting to those, we're gonna write.
Years.
Uh, probably by the end of. Next year, we'll hit, we'll.
How many private systems?
Thirty to forty thousand, rough, roughly thirty.
How many people do you have working with?
Uh, this will be six, seven, eightish people that go out.
Every day.
Yeah. They, they have other, they have other jobs that fill in value. There's certain things the state requires, but there's a deal that can go out mostly for that. Um, some are part time for that, some are full time.
But. Please don't. Think. That my desire to return money to the taxpayer is done through a loan. Taxpayers pay for.
Correct.
You've clearly. Cumulated way too much cash. And now you have this. Idea. To replicate what the state does. And take those monies that the taxpayers have paid. Will be observed. It will go to fund a few taxpayers when. I believe you really should go back to. Source of your. Funds, because there's, there could conceivably be, if you took a million bucks. I believe you have a million bucks, you could put that into this fund. And it too would be gone within. Six months.
Well, we, and we could, we've, so we've looked at even saying like thresholds, like, you know, do you do two hundred thousand dollars a year, do a hundred thousand dollars a year, do you? Do we only do, what do you mean? Uh, sorry, do we, do we actually offer that up as potentially go back to those who need it? We have a cutoff point of some point. The saying, hey, we've hit two hundred thousand dollars a year that have gone back to help people and then we wait for the next year to use additional dollars. The, go, we're going through that process now, what it looks like, because as you mentioned. We could have, we could have a hundred applicants tomorrow, possibly. We could have five applicants. We, we don't know. And plus the systems depend on. Is the system a leach line system that we can replace, help them repair for uh fifteen thousand dollars or is it gonna be an N P D S based on their lot size that's gonna cost twenty, twenty five thousand dollars? Um, one of the things that we know about the system, there's all of those things and there's people that have systems also that just don't, they're not allowed today and that'll be, if, if you try to uh. Install them today, they wouldn't be allowed. So there's people that, that are gonna be hit with, this doesn't meet the criteria, you can't have it.
Yeah, they're just like.
There's some, there's some that have.
Out in the field and it's always been that way.
And unfortunately, without the state is creating a program, we're gonna find those, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's not just here, it's everywhere. I mean, it's, and which is why we have. Some frustrations with the state as to. When you just roll this out and just say, hey, do it. It's a lot to put on some people, especially if the house may be, you know, two hundred years old.
At our last hearing. Being. Did not approve the budget. Based on the cash balance.
That right? I don't know.
I don't know, that was the only thing.
That was really. That was your.
Not sure having this additional information. Gets me to a position. Where I can support. The budget because this is not. It does not have all of the funds. Even though there was no activity in the urgency response fund number sixty thirty. Some of these cash balances after. Monies are taken out. For example, let's, let's. I'm not gonna pick on pools. But I will pick on uh six thousand and eight, it'll affect this waste fund.
Yeah.
It says you have a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. But you're gonna transfer out seventeen thousand dollars. So that means you only have ninety. Four thousand. For the cash balance. Your estimated expense is two thousand dollars a year, ninety four, that's a forty eight year supply of cash. Forty eight years.
Well, so that's one of the ones, there's a transfer I believe outstanding for that we're looking to transfer out um for the person out. There's a person charged that fund is where I'm going at. Now, in the next year, we're gonna charge their, their, their salary, whatever you call it, hourly rate to the fund. It won't be. We're not going to transfer it out, the, the invoice will be for that actual fund.
Well, that's encouraging, but at the same time, you have estimated income of nineteen thousand dollars. Which is seventeen thousand dollars a profit. That's, that funds eight additional years. You have eight years, three years.
But there, but this resource they're talking about, Chris, is not, is not represented in the budget.
That's why this information is faulty?
Actually, that's there. The, the, the cross jurisdictional agreement. Costs are not embedded in their, in their expenditures.
They're just in the general fund. So just for granted.
So they're, I don't think they're the. Did you put them all in the general?
Yeah, they should be all in the general fund.
Including all of that and now stuff.
Not, I mean, I mean, no, because it was created before.
Right, so there's one point three million dollars unaccounted. And that should be divided over all of these.
Correct.
So at Chris's point. Your, your expenses are not anticipated to be two thousand dollars in that fund. It's a person and two thousand additional dollars.
Yes.
Whatever that amount is.
It could be fifty.
Yeah, it could go from. Three hundred thousand years, wherever you said to two.
If you go to the last page, population health.
Yep.
Hundred and thirty five thousand dollars cash. You're not gonna take anything out. At least that's what. Worded here. You have estimated revenue of five grand a year. Estimated expense of seven hundred dollars a year. I think my calculator just about had a heart attack. That's a hundred and ninety three years. If you don't need money, but actually you don't need money. At all, because you have revenue of five grand. That's forty three hundred dollars. Uh, forty three and seven and six. You will never need money back.
Well, so that is, so our nursing needs to charge the general fund right now. That is where that money is being, given requests is transfer that money out into the general fund to cover her salary, which is, which is.
Okay, but I, I. I can only go off the information that I provided.
And I understand that.
That, that, the, the moving thing is hurting and not helping. I, I know why you're doing it now to catch up. But until you go to encumbering money. When, before you obligate. This is gonna be the problem. Then that's why the law prevents you from doing it.
So what's the path? You gotta figure this out, buddy.
Today.
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 Today, today?
Today, today.
Today, today.
And so I, I think that I think it's fair to say that. There are issues. There's no question. I mean, we've been identifying them now the past several months. And. I think the G P H recognizes those and frankly has taken steps to try to address them. I think that they were larger than expected. But at the end of the day, they're not sitting on their hands. They are moving forward. They are taking advice and they are trying to implement. The advice that is being given to them. I don't think that there's any malice or thought here. I think it's fair to say that what G P H has done has created issues in the past. And there is no question that there are action items that they need to take and move forward on. With that said, I think that they are making strides forward. And. You know, that's. That's apparent based upon the, the work that the auditor's office has helped in facilitating. And the actions that G P H has done in order to move things from where they were. To where they are now. And they've done it in a relatively short period of time because there is a focus and I think that focus will be maintained. Because they can't go back to what was going on before. It's not tenable. And the, the plan to implement a financial team. Plan to have to, to replace the then and now policy with a purchase order policy. The plan to take proactive uh. Steps in which to um move from doing everything last minute to having things done in a timely manner is going to be. The steps that are required in which to move this forward. So the fact that you're seeing issues, we don't disagree with you. We're, we're looking for your help and guidance to make sure that we've moved past those issues. And I think that with. The, their new focus, their. And the, the fact that they've reached out and gotten outside assistance. There is a vested interest in making this right.
I was not here for introductions for you, sir.
I am Brian Kestner. I, I've been retained by G P H to assist them in um remedy these situations.
You're not allowed to represent them. No, we, we represent that, but at least more. You're not representing a court providing. Well, advice. Not legal advice necessarily, more. Okay. Practical advice. Um. I don't. I think there's been big improvements. I. Based upon the representations that they're going to. Continue with these and address some of your concerns. I, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Yeah, yeah, you want a second?
I'll second his motion to approve.
My, my biggest heartburn is this um. Inherent conflict. I, and that's not gonna be remedied today.
No, I don't, you, but, but. I mean, the way to solve that would be to have the board. Approve expenditures instead of ratifying them, but I mean, you can have the board beat every week.
That's why, that's why every entity has a fiscal. And, and that fiscal is not the vendor. It's an independent.
So you, you think Jaga Health should have. Somebody processing disorders and actually.
I don't wanna design a solution.
Yeah.
You can't be on both sides.
Well, I know, but I'm, I think.
I can think of a hundred ways that they could do it.
Okay.
But one would be to have a person that is not a Lake County health employee. Because you're a vendor in that capacity. That is a Jaga employee that, or even a part time employee that serves in the capacity of a fiscal. Um.
That's manager.
Yeah.
There, there, there is a way.
And that's a checking of balance, right?
Checking of balance.
So when there's a P O coming over for Lake Health, that person is not looking at it as.
A lake.
A lake health employee. They're looking at it as a Jaga person saying, was that reasonable? And then the bill comes and before they submit the bill, they say, does the bill align with the purchase order that I cut? And if the answer is yes, that would avoid the issue you had where. Changes were being made to people on the invoice that wasn't reflected in the contract. A fiscal person should catch that, not the auditor, because I'm supposed to be just matching numbers.
To.
Must, you know.
Board have any staff? At all?
Yes, there's two vital statistics clerks. They run our uh birth and death certificates, sorry, birth and death.
It's kinda like birth and death.
But, uh, so I mean, I look at Mr. Kestner, just to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn. I mean, I, I don't see how the contract can be amended to, to follow some procedure that you're talking about. Yeah.
The contract can be amended to do whatever we want to.
Right, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't want to speak. No, no, I mean, I don't see why it couldn't be done that way. You, you're adding one person, not gonna make or break anything.
We already have a process in place in which we have. G P H employees provided for in the contract. It is not as if we couldn't change the contract with the further amendment approved by both our courts in which to create a new position. And that would address the auditor's concerns. Now, this isn't an overnight thing that I, this can be done by, you know, next Monday. But. If, if the auditor, treasurer and prosecutor would give us the grace, those, those changes can be made and will be made in order to um fulfill those. Questionable issues that are, are still impeding the approval of this budget.
All the questions, here's a, one of the possible scenario, you could have a part time. Fiscal. Truly part time. It can be a electronic. Could it not?
I mean, you, you don't need to physically. No, you just have to be able to review the documents and.
Yeah.
Somebody that's accountable to the board, because the board's gonna be ratified, they can. You know, somebody who's accountable to the Jaga board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The board is ultimately the liable party because you're the ones who are elected. To serve in those capacities.
It could not be a board member.
It could, it could if they wanna spend that energy and time for free, but I, that's the problem. It's a lot of, it's. Not gonna be insignificant hours, right?
It's gonna depend. Should the board have a treasurer?
You have officers? No, I've been acting in that capacity for seven years. Um, I'm, I'm male recently, I should.
Sure.
Alright, just uh, that's right, but uh, Ron Graham Health Commissioner for Lake Jaga County, I mean, I think we're committed to having a mechanism official, we need to. And we could use a private firm, I mean, for, for finance, so it's separate, unbiased. Uh, but I would like to thank you guys. If you can't approve it, health is everything. Believe me, I have Parkinson's, so I understand. That the value of health, and we're just trying our best to keep health in Lake of Jaga counties both. For any county for that matter. So there's a mechanism that we need to meet myself for the auditor, helping things on track. I might as well make sure we're committed to that. And I appreciate your patience and I think that the advice you've given us uh does make us have a very path forward and the flexibility to contract me on the border. Uh, in Jaga, I think we're a hundred percent committed, a hundred and ten percent committed that is moving. So I just wanna say that, thank you.
Okay, okay. Call question.
Yes. No.
I, I'm gonna reluctantly yes, because to be honest with you, I don't, I don't know what we would do. If we fail. I don't know that we could collect revenue. Lawfully.
Agree.
And, and I don't know that that's, I agree totally with Chris's vote. Having said that. This is like the constitutional amendment to abolish all profit taxes. It's for the right reasons, but it's the wrong decision and, and that, it's just because you can't make it happen. There's gotta be a way out of this and, and I can't, I mean, my staff is burned out. I'm just telling you, we, I had. Five or six people working full time on resolving issue with the Columbus Audit. With a grant. I mean, we were just going nuts. I didn't deal with anybody else, but health. And that can't continue. I don't have that bandwidth and. People were getting anxious and we gotta stop that. We gotta, we gotta behave and we gotta do this in a timely manner. And I know Brian's committed to do that, but. But oftentimes Brian isn't made aware of things until the eleventh hour, which then. Unfortunately, he's a nice guy, so you wanna help him, right? I mean. You gotta wear thin, Brian, I'm just saying.
On the way, I understand.
Yeah.
I'm talking to Mr. Kestner, so I. I'm gonna be spending more time how I used to doing. So these go back to where it was. Um, it, it's my accountability, so I'm the one that's got to, I see the hat.
But your role's changed that, and I think you have to acknowledge that. When you were being hired, I remember when Bob Wise that first brought you in, you had trouble with the budget.
Yeah.
He brought you in as a contractor to deal with the fiscal side only. There wasn't a contractual agreement of this magnitude with Lake. That all changed when you cut that contract. Your relationship. And your independent accountability changed because you're employed by Lake. And so, uh, you know, you can't, you can't be on, you can't be the buyer and the seller.
Right.
You gotta be on one side or the other. That's my issue here. I am a big advocate of separation of authorities. And I think anyone studying this model would say, yeah, it's ripe for fraud. I mean, that's what they would say. There, I don't think there's any of that going on. But there's all of the signs, this is not good long term. You need to have accountability at all levels that are not conflicted by an agreement, that they're benefiting from material.
Well, and I think to that point, correct, I mean, I think that's where, as, as other counties have come to us asking how this is working and how it's going. I think that is one thing, you know, we've mentioned, the hardest thing is the billing and receiving because you're. It's a difficult thing to be in, like you, I, I think theoretically, if, if everything was done all over again, you'd probably keep vital stats and a fiscal person. I, I think that's.
I would agree.
I, I think the goal was you didn't have to, so you save money, but I think in the long term. You eat that small cost, it's had the bigger.
Well, are, are you really saving money though, as a result of not having it? Because I'm not saving any money.
Well, and that's.
Only your generals probably spending more money.
Well, that's where Mr. Kishore and I have gone through to fix what the issues that has occurred, we're going to fix.
And I I know you will, and but. To to Mr. Hitchcock's point. If he would have voted yes, I would have voted no, just so that sends you the message.
That's why I wanted to vote no before.
I read between the lines on that one.
But I I just I just don't think. I just don't think at the end of the day, though, that's the right thing to do, because what's. Now, what do we do? We just move the ball to a different problem. And it's gonna become his, because now what do we do collecting this money and giving it to you because we didn't.
And I my my goal would be, by no means I know I'm not here required, but my goal would be is Mr. Kishore and I. Handle things and fix things. Well, I will at least give it up to your team to update the budget commissions you guys have.
I will tell you this. If this is not moving in the right direction. By the time this budget's heard next year, I'm gonna join you.
Yeah.
So I'm not putting a club over anybody's head. I'm just saying, good conscience. There's gotta be a window of time. And there's got to be a reason, and I think a year is reasonable. You've got to at least be moving in the right direction. And I agree. You may not hire the person for six, seven, eight months, but. By one year, you should know where you're running, right? There should be a plan laid out. And we should be able to account for these things in a manner that we're used to seeing. I mean, we can't have one entity that's financials are totally different than everybody else's in the county.
No, I mean, it pains me, because I mean, not that long ago, I mean, it was. Most of the accolades in terms of how things were presented, how things were done, and I want to get back to that, and that's.
You used to submit your budget in you in Newark.
Yes.
We trained you in doing this. Now we're back to spreadsheets.
Well, and that's a conversation I had with the person as well.
And my people say, how many more people do we have to train that are only gonna not use it?
No, and that's.
I get that. That's valuable.
And that's where that. That used to be more of my day job was either doing it or keeping behind who did it, and I'm there'd be some of that coming back to that. It's all do that, so. It will be corrected.
We very much want you to succeed.
And and I I I definitely get that from. No one's like trying to hit the side of the head. It's more of like, here's what you need to do to succeed, how to get you there.
They'll put it.
You could have, yeah.
We could have had you. We could have made you fail.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
There's nobody in this room that doesn't think we could have just said. We're gonna process this in our normal time, and that would have killed this.
Right.
Whole deal with Columbus in looking at your grant.
Agreed.
But we went above and beyond what we had to do, much because that little guy in my shoulder was saying, just do the right thing. Even though I think a stronger message would have been if it failed, but then again, what what are the ramifications?
Try not to sit on a shoulder.
That's right. Yeah, that's.
No, I mean, I.
You were on the other side.
I think you, I mean, I. I think you guys said or have said everything in terms of support for how to make us succeed, and I and I take it that way. I don't think anything's taken as like an offense. It's more of how do we get you to where we need to get you to.
I look forward to seeing the updated version of this showing employee expense.
Yes.
Included in your expense.
Yeah, there should be, even if it's a organized, a separate item, especially through the contract or whatever.
And then.
You you gotta put it in there, because that's where it's coming.
And that's the we're gonna take an amended budget to the board like. Hopefully this month or next month, because the invoices now will be in there, and right now they're they're not in, like, there's not. They're not the appropriations there to pay that expense. If we allocate the by fund, but the expense, I'm sorry, salary.
So you need to get them a rate resolution.
Are we gonna stick with the same margin in numbers? We'll change the date.
I don't hear.
Get a resend to this motion that was made on June second. To decline.
Well, they cemented it and we approved it.
Well, we actually. They didn't resend. We actually modified the budget content by question.
You did this.
No, 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 by question. This is not. This is the origin.
Well, I thought they added the. Transfer.
No, because, well, the transfers were separate issues outside of this budget. That that's what I'm saying. There's nothing to redo because nothing was obligated or nothing was encumbered. It was obligated only.
We have the authority.
Well, I think by. By approving it, that's.
Okay, that would automatically rescind. Okay.
Yeah, it's not rescinded. We we reconsidered it and approved it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then we'll issue a new revenue certificate with today's date.
Yeah, and a new uh rate resolution.
They are on the. They are on the. They're on the campus.
Oh, you're on the county's rate resolution?
Yes.
Oh, that's right, because you're on the same schedule. So Adrian will get it when he does his budget. Correct. Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. If any, you may want to stick around just in case anybody has any questions from the public. I don't know who's.
I was just gonna stand up so that Adrian's gonna see. I was gonna stand right here just in case you guys have a question afterwards.
Sir, so.
So we'll we'll open it up for general discussion first and then public comment.
Is there anything else? Well, that there was a reason.
Well, the only general discussion we were gonna have was we were gonna ask you if you wanted to still meet on July seventh.
That's next week, Monday. We're gonna have to for the school, right?
They don't have to.
Or that they can't issue you money. Without a certificate, they can't issue you money. Could you just call and see if.
We're. I mean, we're not gonna get news news certificate.
Tensent. Tensent's the only one I'm worried about.
It's their final. It's their twenty.
It's their twenty-five. It's their ending year.
Yeah.
Right.
But they're not. People don't even have to do.
Oh, okay. Yeah, would you touch base with him? They'll just make sure it's he's not. Doesn't have something that you asked to have done.
Yeah, we'll just make sure.
And if that's true, then are you proposing?
Well, I don't think we're gonna have it.
Yeah, there's not gonna be one.
And I would make a motion that we cancel that meeting pending Tensent.
Okay.
Wait till I finish this.
This is just you. Is there a second? I didn't. Okay.
I think Chuck said.
Okay, and then any other? So the only other comment that I was gonna make is I am working on a shortlist of the changes that occurred with. The Senate and the House and Senate budget.
Their governor's being urged to line out a veto number of those provisions.
Yes, he did. So so I'm I'm gonna wait till after today. So Kate is working on that. I should have something for the budget commission's consideration. See.
Okay, well.
And then I'll send it to Chrissy.
Yes, yeah.
So I'll do it. Send it to her. Let her review it, and then we'll.
Yeah, that would be good. I don't know what their, the school carryover limitation. I know there's hard push forty percent.
Thirty to fifty to forty, now except for.
Well, to have them line out a veto that.
That's what they want?
That's the big push.
From?
And if there's a push.
There's enough other stuff, though, that we're gonna need to be aware of, like no replacement levies.
Well, they're also trying to get in the line.
Well, there are a couple of persons there. I mean, we want to just undo everything they did for the person. The last. Yes, there are gonna be changes of some kind, I would hope.
Yeah. All right. Sarah had nothing for us? No, we're not there yet.
Okay, Sarah, you got anything?
Um, I I have a question, I guess maybe for Adam. I'm I'm just looking at. The League Observer report from the last GPH meeting, and it's the observer stated that. You stated that the budget commission required. That the cross jurisdictional agreement be redone. I never. Is is that accurate that that the budget commission did require that agreement to be redone?
It was the amendment to the contract. It wasn't the budget, which I don't think I said. I think it says the auditor, but it's probably in the same conversation. It was just amending it versus how we were increasing the cross jurisdictional. So the the board was more saying, if we said we needed employee, like say, I'm saying a sanitarium. And it's fifty thousand a year, I'd say, hey, we need a sanitarium fifty thousand a year. They would say, yes. We were not. We were not voting to amend the actual cross jurisdictional, though. And now we're doing that. So beginning of every year, we'll go through and we'll amend it. And if if it holds true, by saying is the board president has to sign it, and then the health commissioner of Lake County has to sign it. And then that puts the amendment in place, and we were not doing that originally, and that was. Because the board voted on that recent, I mean, not recently, but we were talking about it again as to where the numbers were going. And they asked, you know. Why we're adding. I said, really, we're not adding. You guys already approved all these positions. Now we're just formalizing it in that. The cross jurisdictional amendment.
Okay, so.
I, Sarah, I I recall the. The original cross jurisdictional agreement had specific names of certain categories of employees, and they're raped. And I think this may have stemmed from a bill that was submitted to my office. Or a different type of employee. At its at a slightly different rate. That we objected to because it was not considered in the cross jurisdictional agreement. Brian, is that accurately?
Yeah, the terminology didn't match up.
That was summer technician and E H uh intern or something like that.
So I I will not, as a general rule, under a contract. I will not allow amended terms to the contract without the contract so reflecting those amendments by the legislative body. And that's, again, something a fiscal would check, would check and and probably kick before it ever got to to my office. So I think that's where the. That that was the 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 why we were requesting it either be changed in the contract. Or that person shouldn't be named that and at that rate, because it doesn't match the contract.
Okay, I think that makes sense. So so it's actually a request from the auditor's office to update that rather than the budget commission. I went back through. I'm like, I don't remember anybody saying anything about that in a budget commission meeting. And it looks like that's gonna be handled going forward by amendments as needed then.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll have to. They all depend on if we like. I'm using a new program example. We get a new grant tomorrow. We have to amend the contract in the. The attachment, the salary attachment, and we'll keep amending that and updating that.
Okay. That makes sense to me. Um, other stuff, um. I actually. Who's sitting next to Adrian? I can't. I can't see who's over there. Okay, hello. I can see like part of your body. Um, um, okay, great. I'll just make my usual requests for all of the documents. I think I saw a side-in sheet. Including that, please. But thanks, everyone.
Good. Adrian, do you have a question?
Yeah, so the commissioners are having our public hearing for the twenty twenty-six tax budget tomorrow. Would invite any members of the budget commission to come and and listen in on that. I did drop off the the public copies here on Friday. It's also posted on the county's website now. For the most part, actually, for for the whole budget, it is exactly what people had submitted. There were a handful of funds from a couple of different departments that I reached out to. Because their ending balance on the tax budget would have been negative, gave them the opportunity to take a look at that. There were some. Adjustments that were submitted that I incorporated. So everything has positive numbers on it now. We felt, at least the commissioners, we discussed this in public session. Felt that the, at least in the general fund, the unappropriated balance was sufficient to. Handle all the requests, even though the requests outnumbered the calendar year revenue. So we ended up with a a budget that the commissioners are gonna be looking at tomorrow that. Funds everything and leaves us with almost a four million dollar balance in the general fund, so. I did indicate to them on Friday that there's still really two things that are outstanding, and that would be any sort of. Better not reflected in the budget right now would be any sort of levy reductions that. Either the budget commission would recommend or the commissioners would would want to seek. In order to offset, you know, the property tax increases. So last couple of years, we've reduced the children's services levy to reflect that. I was hesitant to recommend levy reductions simply because I don't know what the the status is gonna be next year for levies. Whether or not, you know, I was approached for the first time. Um, I think on Saturday to sign one of the petitions to get that constitutional amendment put on. And I too indicated to them that this is only half the equation. You know, you you you're gonna eliminate this revenue, but how are you gonna handle the expenses? This doesn't answer that question. And there's a lot of very important services that are provided to levies. So. But for for what that's worth, the other thing too was the, I know last year. Um, there was some comments that were floated by the commissioners about the redistribution of the local government fund. Um, taking the county's portion of that. And distributing it to the townships. That no changes for that are reflected in this budget either. I just did not know. I'd indicated to the commissioners that I would come and just kind of see what your guys' thoughts were on on both of those. In order to communicate those to them during the meeting tomorrow, if you. Uh, rub the same opinion to wait and see and how these different petitions and. There are also some budget bills or house bills that are in Columbus, one to eliminate the inside village. And it's different things like this that could alter the the revenue sources and stuff for the county, so I'd not know if. You all thought we were in a wait-and-see kind of pattern on that as well, or if you thought actions. If those are things that we can can still take, you know, before the end of the year. I think. When we did the first one, we it was like Halloween in October. When the commissioner decided to reduce the children's services.
So your local government fund ship, I think that sailed for twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
So anything you decide between now and let's say. Early. May. Of twenty twenty-six would affect twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, okay.
Which there may be some changes made. Um, in this budget bill, which could affect us. Emoting that to you.
Right.
Um, one being, right now, there's veto power at the city level. Um, I think there was a proposal made to eliminate that veto right.
Yes, that that's my concern. You know, I know that the commissioners have have thought, hey, you know, the county, it's about what, seven hundred something sixty? So I know there's been some thought from the commissioners, you know, especially some of the smaller townships could could use. Uh, you know, the formula. We did redo the formula several years ago, cut out the park districts receiving money and Honey Valley was getting money. Getting that minimum amount and equivalent was also, and so we we did change the formula. My concern, I would be all for, especially since the commissioners want to redistribute that money to the lo- local. To the townships and the villages and the city. The problem is, if we ever wanted to change it back, the city would have veto power over it. And frankly. Given the track record with the city, I I. That concerns me. Greatly, so. I don't really want to tinker with it as long as the city has that veto power. If if that were removed by legislative action and we could. You know, it it was. There was more flexibility allotted in there, because once you give them the money, they're never gonna veto. Given that a little bit back.
Yeah, I'll give the county my credit for, you're the ones who are gonna give the money. And that. I don't know that that would be reciprocated by the city.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
I wasn't aware of that, that mechanics.
Yeah, so they have a they have a veto.
That's what I'm concerned.
The levy reduction issue, I think we would be wise to wait to see what the final form of the budget is in. Which is gonna be probably passed tomorrow. And the reason for that is. Because I believe there's a provision in the budget, which. Stands the test of the governor. Would require every entity to. Through a series of public hearings, accept any increase in inside village increase due to valuation change. So if that were to happen. That would be the time where the I would recommend the county. If they're going to do anything as far as a reduction of something, gives you more flexibility, because if you could accept. Inside village increase, offset it with a reduction of a non-qualified levy.
Okay.
And benefit the taxpayers, because inside village is qualified. So there's a twelve and a half percent advantage to keeping inside village. The taxpayers will see a twelve and a half percent benefit. And you see no change, so why wouldn't we do that?
Yeah.
So I think we're ahead of our skis right now because the the budget hasn't isn't in its true final form.
Peter, what time?
Um, ten o'clock tomorrow.
Will be online?
Uh, yes, it is. The only thing that I don't know if they ever got set up would be to have my presentation. Yeah.
I think they. Or need to. You were going Dorka on that. I think Dorka said he got it working, but.
Yeah, it's not finalized. They're they're in there today. I was gonna.
They're trying to get on multiple streets.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be on the screens in the.
Oh, they're trying to share to the.
Yeah, to the live stream.
Got it.
I don't know if they got.
Okay.
That or not.
Okay.
But I can, if if any of you would like a copy of my presentation, I'd be happy to send it. Does the does the tax budget reflect wage and wage adjustments for next year? Not under the commissioner's hiring authority. There were no. Uh, any departments that included wage adjustments in their budget, they nothing was reduced. There was no payroll requests that were reduced. But the commissioners have not made any decisions on raises or anything for for next year.
And it's a standard reason. If somebody did put it in their budget request and it wasn't reduced, like the commissioners. Determined to do something, it would it would be offset.
Correct.
Right, you wouldn't add it. I mean, it's not gonna be.
Correct.
So Jim's.
Yeah, if some places gave, like, like this happens with the sheriff's office typically, because they have a union contract. So they have their wage adjustments built into their budget, so if the commissioners then decide to. Offer a three percent wage increase, typically I didn't do it for the sheriff, because he had already budgeted for it.
So if the commissioners do a wage increase larger than what was submitted to his budget, you can make up for that.
Yes, yeah, I would reach out to all the department directors and wanted officials and. Determine, you know, jointly what, what was gonna be needed, based on what had been budgeted and what was, was given.
Yeah, I, I guess as somebody who does the, you know, does the budget. For my office. I wanna be consistent with what everybody else is doing, but I think I, we discussed during my budget hearing, I also philosophically feel like the tax budget should. Reflect wage increases, because. You know, that's giving us a, a realistic expectation of the taxpayers of what's gonna happen next year.
Yeah, and it was really good when the commissioners went out and did the, the three-year. Wage adjustments, because people could budget for it. They just haven't made any decisions yet.
And I get that, it, it's, it. I know historically, they've never done.
That was a rarity, when, when they did the three years.
Yeah, I wonder why they did that. Um, you know, but I, uh. I guess my. This going into the next year and doing it, which they started doing, it was like January, February, then March, and then. I think when I got fed up, it was May. I hope we don't do that again. I hope they decide before the end of the calendar year. Because we've gotta make our decisions about levy reductions before the end of the calendar year.
There were a number of discussions that happened during the budget hearings in regards to. To putting something down for, for wage increases, yes. Okay, so.
I, again, I'm not advocating for, for any particular wage increase, I'm just saying, from a planning standpoint.
Makes it a lot easier.
Needs to be decided in this calendar year for next calendar year, right? Please do not go back to the old way, that, that sort of happened.
I will let them.
Which was not your fault. But. It's ridiculous.
And just for the record, I know that the budget proposal that passed the House and the Senate, it went to, it's in the governor's hands. Includes a elected official wage increase, which I think is. Is horrendous. Anybody in this climate that tries to give elected officials pay raises should be shot. I mean. Well, maybe not shot. I mean, it's just how. How bad are those optics? People are complaining of their taxes and. They're doing. They, they slipped that in along with a couple of the things that I thought were very.
Yeah, I didn't find out about that until, uh, the weekend, and I was.
I guess they delayed the, also, texts between congressional, or people in the legislature and their aides are no longer public record. The next term. And that was slid, slid in, it was in nobody's bill, it just got slid in there. Which I think is just very bad for everybody.
Yeah, it's, uh. Well, the, the commissioners are not, uh, adopting the tax budget tomorrow, they're just hearing the, the public hearing. Uh, they're not adopting it until next Tuesday, so if there is anything that comes up that. I can, uh, incorporate at the last minute that you, you all think that we would need to, or should. Then please let me know.
That just won't happen till the next term. You can't do interim midterm.
I'm just talking about with.
Inspection face, right?
And that's, once it's passed, well, inspection changes can't occur. By the legislature, as long as it's done in a public meeting, correct?
So, okay. Well, thank you for that update.
Any other questions? Very none.